We'll call the meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
Miller?
Here.
Edinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
And we have our pastor, Renata, for invocation tonight. There we go. Pastor Jeff Reinhardt for invocation.
Thank you, council, for including these invocations as part of your business. Let us pray. Gracious God, we give thanks to you. We give thanks to you for all who are gathered here today. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself, for the measure of health you give us that we need to fulfill our callings. We thank you for sustenance and for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of being appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. We thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. God, you have ordained this governing body and have called on us as citizens to submit to their authority as they promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and rightness. Grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement, and grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city. Amen.
Steve, please, in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no interests for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Woody.
I would like to move for amendments to the agenda to pull ZC 1-14 Lilac Glen, Council Bill 15021, and A414, annexation of Lilac Glen, Resolution 15056, and Council Bill 1501022.
Okay, so, Renata, those are items two, three, and four on the agenda.
It should be items only, items three and four, under other business.
Oh, excuse me, not two, yeah. So, items three and four, we're going to pull those from the agenda tonight. Second. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are going to adjust. One more thing is that I'm going to, we'll do the consent calendar, and then we will bring forward the carousel issue, so we can talk about that and then have public comment right after that. So, we'll get through the consent calendar, then we'll move on to the next part.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve, move to approve the consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 15052.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Edinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Motion carried. So, what we're going to do now is we're going to have Steve Anthony come up, and he's going to give the presentation on the carousel. And I wanted to just restructure this a little bit, so Steve can give his presentation. We can have the folks that want to come up and comment on the carousel situation come up and comment on it, and then we can deliberate as a council on that. And then, after that, once that issue is resolved, then anyone that wishes to come up and give general public comment will have an option at that time. So, go ahead, Steve.
Okay. Mayor and council members. Back in July, the council had a workshop with our Park Recreation Commission and our advisory committee where we went over the Four Corners Plan. And what I'm talking about tonight is not the BLM. At that meeting, we addressed BLM and Four Corners. So, what the issue I'm addressing tonight just deals with the Four Corners. And the council at that time had a motion unanimously for me to work with the Carousel Foundation and draft a lease to bring back to the council. So, we've been working with the Carousel Foundation over the last couple of months, and we feel that we've got a lease that should be agreeable to all parties. This went to the Park Rec Commission at our last meeting, so the commission has forwarded this on to the council tonight to observe. So, I want to walk you through a little bit. So, the carousel basically came out of public meetings and meeting with user groups of the area and potential user groups for the Four Corners. And as you remember, the Four Corners was added on to the BLM plan just for us to study and come up with recommendations for drawing, improving the Four Corners area, which is Northwest Boulevard, Mullen, and where it meets, and to improve access to City Park. So, next week, we will be coming to you with the road plan, the next council meeting, but tonight, I'm just going to address the carousel issue. So, originally, if you remember our first meetings, the carousel in Mullen was right about in this area here. We had it so it did not obstruct the Memorial View site and view lines. And so, we had kind of a bigger footprint where we actually went into the City Park. This design, we're just taking Mullen Avenue, not going into the park. So, after meeting with several groups, we redesigned and placed the carousel in a different location. So, my overhead here actually shows you how the field sits now. Here's Home Plate at Memorial. This is how the grandstand sits. The carousel proposed location would be over here, basically off this edge of the first base side of Memorial Field. So, it's sitting back quite a bit farther than it was originally planned. This would be more in the area now of what is that dirt parking lot where we have some of the corded greens scored and that we are just using for overflow park maintenance. So, we're proposing that the Carousel Foundation be able to lease 3,200 square feet, which would be this footprint here, to place the carousel. Part of the lease, then, would be for them to be able to construct a building to house the carousel. The building would be approximately 30 feet in width and 15 feet high. I do have a picture of that later. I'll show in the updates. But we feel this area, the building, will be more garage door styled, that you could take it down and implement weather, raise it back up. The carousel, and later you'll probably have some input from the foundation, is not the large carousel, but the original Playland Pier carousel. And we feel we, after meeting as a group, we felt that the carousel would add to Memorial Field and the plaza, because the goal is to combine City Park, Memorial Field, and we feel this would be a great location with ample parking. In the plans, you don't see it here, but we will propose two portable picnic shelters, if you see the vinyl ones. So, those would be under control of the city. So, if somebody wanted to come down and do a birthday party, they could rent those shelters from the city and use the carousel. Also, we feel that the Carousel Foundation could share the concession area at Memorial with the concessionaire to sell their tickets. We've already talked to the concessionaire this year and thought, what would his feedback be? And he said that would be a great idea, because it would just help both businesses. So, our, the idea would be then that the carousel, and I did have a misprint in my report, that the lease we're proposing would go April 1st to October 3rd. I think my staff report, I had May 1st. I apologize for that. We're recommending $100 per year lease and 5% of the net profits. The lease would run for 15-year term and then be renewable after that. I have, the Carousel Foundation would carry a $1 million liability policy, naming the city as the co-insured. The lease funds would be placed in the capital improvement fund, and that is talking to Land and Water Conservation Fund. I talked to Kathy Muir, who is our representative in Boise. I just wanted to make sure the carousel is allowable under Land and Water Conservation Funds. They, their concessionaire, just like Harbor House would be, any other concessionaire you have in a park. So, the only caveat was that any funds that we would get from the carousel go back into the Parks Capital Improvement Fund to be used at that location, because the funds are, come from there. So, it is allowable under Land and Water Conservation, ample parking. We feel it would be noticeable there. And the goal is to make the plaza here at Memorial in this one big park area. Plenty of tree plantings for sound buffering. We feel Memorial Field, the grandstand, will muffle some of the sound. We do have the requirement that the speakers would be faced towards Northwest Boulevard. We think the majority of the sound will be captured inside the building. We do have that it would conform to all ordinances. We did meet as a Park and Rec Commission today, our sound ordinances. One recommendation the Park and Rec Commission had was that the sound level, instead of from the lowest, from the closest neighborhood house, which would be down in here, which is a 65 decibel level, that they would recommend then that we have the reading from this side of Memorial Field of where Mullen and Park meet, that it would be no louder than 65 decibels at that level, which we would, hopefully, would mitigate any sound going into the neighborhood then on that, because I know that has been an issue. Also, in talking to the Carousel Foundation, it's not calliope music anymore. It's controlled. It's more like you would have with a, if you have a party at home, you hire a disc jockey or a dance, that the music can be controlled by those levels. Looking at other locations, we feel probably for the synergy for the carousel to be able to make it financially, this would be the best location coming into town. Softball players, their kids, if they get restless after the third inning, mom and dad can take them out to ride the carousel. With the parties that we do have in the park, that we believe as staff, this would just add to the area of it. The Park and Rec Commission had some concerns at the meeting. We tried to address all those in the contract, as far as background checks for employees, the sound mitigation, and just what would happen. The one big question is, what happens if the foundation cannot feasibly make this financially? This building, then, the foundation's agreed to remove the carousel at their cost, put it back in the storage. The building then would go to the city, which we could use as a picnic shelter or some activity on that. So, we feel that it's a fair lease to both parties. It protects the city for liability in the future, and I think one reason this is coming to you tonight, before it actually, we discussed the road, is that this is not part of the BLM. It's separate. This area is part of the park. At the council meeting that we had about two months ago, added this to Memorial, so it is part of Memorial Park now, in that there is a benefactor out there that the foundation has that has given them a time limit on their fundraising. So, we want to give them an opportunity to be able to start their fundraising. And so, I'm here to basically answer any other questions we might have. Okay, so I will go through the rest of the pictures. I just wanted to give an eye. So, this shows the carousel in its original location at Playland Pier on Independence Point. And this is the design of the building. I know that it might not exactly turn out 100%, but we're about 95% sure that this will be the building. We've talked to them that it will be attractive. It's just not going to be a steel building. No offense to steel structures of those groups, but it's been architecturally designed. We want a shingled roof on it, siding. We want it to blend when people come in and see it. It blends in with the history of Memorial Field. And to me, in my heart, you know how Memorial Field's kind of my baby on this? And if I didn't feel that this fit into Memorial, to our history, to the area, I wouldn't be such a strong supporter. But I just see those two complementing each other. And this is, I had to stretch the pictures a little bit, so the horses aren't that long. And so, but I just wanted to kind of show you that it has been restored. It is beautiful that, we feel that going in, once the foundation has the work, that they're not putting up something that isn't aesthetically pleasing and will not be popular with the public. And that's...
So, Steve, could you go back to that very, the very first slide that you started off with? About two months ago, I took a trip to Missoula and to Helena. They have carousels in both those cities, because I knew that there was concern about the noise. And I can tell you that at each location there, for the most part, the sound, the music, is contained inside the building. So, I wanted to gauge how far I could be away from the building and still hear whatever noise was inside of the building. And when you got to 50 feet, and I see 50 feet as half a basketball court, so if you're at half court of basketball and you're looking at the hoop over there, when you're 50 feet away, you could not hear anything out of that building. So, Steve, maybe if you could just approximate here, so there's the carousel building. Where would, where would 50 feet be if you went 50 feet towards the neighborhood?
Probably about right in there.
So, once you got beyond there, going any direction more than 50 feet, I don't anticipate the, the music in this carousel being any louder than either of the other carousels that I visited. Both these carousels were, had a lot of happy kids and happy families in them, and there was some noise from the kids and that type of thing. But it wasn't a, it wasn't really a noise. Noise is not going to be an issue here. So, I just wanted to alleviate some people's concerns, because rightfully so. And the reason why I went on that trip is because a lot of the neighbors were concerned. And let's be honest, if for 10 hours a day, we had to listen to the same music over and over and over and over and over again, we'd be a little concerned, too. But I can tell you, in this case, it's not going to be the case, because not much beyond the grandstand there, you're not going to be able to, to hear any of the noise from there.
I would estimate if Home Plate at Memorial sits right here, from there to centerfield Memorial's 300, 100 yards, that's a football field, to left field, a little less, or 100 yards, is probably about right there. And that's, you know, good 20 feet back. So, we're probably 175 yards from houses there, 150 to 175.
So, you're over 500 feet away from there. Okay.
And that just, I use this overlay, because it shows you how the ball field currently, currently sits. And so, it is quite a ways actually from the grandstand there. And one thing, we will have some fairly good trees planted. We've, you know, budgeted for large-sized trees to help muffle some of the sound. And, and I think the key, and I know there's concerns about NIC and their music, their speakers, their speakers are right there, and they face the field. You know, our, we'll meet with the carousel, they'll be inside a building, and their speakers will face up towards the courthouse.
And again, the carousel has been donated, the physical carousel, and it's donated funds that's going to build that plaza.
Correct. Yes. And so, basically, we've taken this little area here. This will not be included in the budget that comes to the city for that, to the carousel. You know, and granted, there'll be some little infrastructure things we have to do to do the whole plaza, but this is kind of a different, separate area that the carousel will be responsible for, for developing.
So, council questions for Steve. Kiki?
I have just a few, although you made my list shorter. You answered most of them pretty well.
Well, that's what I'm supposed to do.
So, that's good. I'm appreciative that there's a stringent exit strategy that's written in here. I know that I had folks ask me about that. The drawing that we have in our council packet isn't the exact same as this overlay drawing. And it looks that it's, it looks that it's pretty close, but can you just kind of point out where, what we approved to be what's known now as Memorial Park? Where is the red bat entire borderline called Memorial Park?
And actually, all of this is Memorial Park now. We included the parking lot all the way up. So, this would all be Memorial Park. So, you can kind of see, if you go down there now, you know, the Cur Oil Building's somewhere in here, and if you see the railroad line ran right through there. So, basically, the railroad track would almost kind of dissect that one corner there. And you'll see a few...
So, everything in red is Memorial Park?
Correct.
Okay. And so, this leased piece is, the entire purple piece is the obligation of the Carousel Foundation?
Correct.
Okay. Now, will they be operating concessions independently within the purple leased?
No. No. We would, we've talked to them, all the concessions would come out of Memorial Field concession stand on that. So, I think the goal, and I know Rita's here to answer, but talking to them, they've, this would just basically be the carousel and a wait area for kids, and we would work for Memorial Field for them to be able to sell tickets, concessions out of the Memorial Field grandstand, working with the concessionaire.
And then, this diagram, this depiction, is actually made part of the lease agreement that we have in here. And so, was this one of them that was presented during the master planning process that public was able to give input on?
This, at the first master plans, the carousel was right out in here. And so, this one, basically, the only group that really ever saw that in the carousel wasn't designed in at that time is when we met with the foreground homeowners. They saw this design here. It did not include the carousel at that time, but it did include the different, the road, different layout. So, this is a pretty drastic change as far as the footprint of what Mullen was compared to the Mullen, to the original ones, because the original one went into the park, and the parking lot was down here on this corner, and when there were some trees being removed. So, in meeting with the foreground homeowners, we knew that they didn't want any trees removed in that corner, and there was concerns about the parking lot on that end and infringing into the park. So, basically, this design was a compromise to not go in the park, not to remove any trees, and to move the carousel, basically, from this area here back into that corner.
And I'm a huge fan of the carousel. I, I will tell you, some of the foundation members will remember that I actually organized a group to march in the parade for them to, when they first started that, that funding. I worked with another couple of people to do that. Huge fan of the carousel. What I'm asking the questions for is that I want to make sure that if none of the rest of the Mullen Trail realignment happened, that this has been, this is building a park with public input, hopefully, and that it's a project that the community supports, and it isn't just a special interest group who's getting a project in a park without public input, and that regardless of what happened to the development in Memorial Park itself, this carousel could be installed on city property. And that was kind of the line in my questioning.
And so, I think in, at the carousel, at our public meetings, we never got, I don't think, the carousel is probably one of our most popular items. I think just the concern is, I think everybody's for the carousel, it's the noise. You know, is there going to be noise? And I think we can address that. But I never really heard from the public that, no, we don't want the carousel. You know, mostly, we heard we do want the carousel back, but I know there's a concern from the foreground neighborhoods about the noise for the six months. And we feel strongly between, like it's any group, is we're going to have to work together between the foreground neighborhood, the Carousel Foundation, and our staff to come up with some. And I think they want this to be a success, too. They don't want to make life unbearable for the foreground people. That's the last thing they want to do. I think it's something they want to see as an amenity. If you have people visiting you and you live in the foregrounds, they got grandkids, take them over to the carousel. And we just, we feel, you know, there's, we're thoughts, put it farther down, Northwest Boulevard, this, but in order for it to have a chance to go and to make this a true plaza, kind of a destination, little area, we think the carousel fits right there. And that's, I think, some of our public input and, that we got at our meetings. You know, Amy and Steve were on that committee, and you were at our open houses, and I don't remember anybody really ever saying the carousel, they don't want the carousel. I think it's pretty much everybody wants it.
Thank you. I think you've addressed the questions really well, and I think the lease looks really solid. Thanks.
Dan?
Thank you. I just want to clarify something and other questions. Steve, you said the whole purple area is what the lease agreement is for, but in the lease agreement, it says 3,200 square feet. And then, it's just the building.
Well, basically, on that, so the purple area, though, is what's called the Carousel Plaza. And so, there's trees planting on that, but it's kind of a standalone project on the plaza. And so, we didn't want to include this in the whole plan, so that, this is the city responsibility here. The carousel would lease that area. There probably would be some tree plantings, things like that, in the city area, but we wanted to kind of signify that area. It's kind of a standalone project on there.
Okay. Now, I get asked this question all the time, so let's put it on the record. Why wasn't this put on McEwen Field? And why wasn't it put on Independence Point?
Couple things. Independence Point, I can answer pretty easy, because I was on the original committee of nine that studied that. In the original Independence Point, a couple reasons is sightlines, views, and vistas came back big, that they just felt the carousel, now that Independence Point had radically changed over when it was Playland Pier, and to put a carousel right in the middle of Independence Point, that it felt that, the committee then felt that it just didn't really fit in, because Independence Point, the uses had changed for it, and didn't think it was the appropriate spot. McEwen, I was on the periphery of that one, but again, in talking to Scott Cranston and Dave Patzer today, again, it was the plaza, the views and vistas. That's why you don't see any trees on the plaza, and we've gotten complaints, it's too hot, but they wanted to keep that sightway open. And I don't think the Carousel Foundation was really ever given the opportunity to say, hey, we want to do it at McEwen. I think the advisory committee kind of knocked that off real early on that. So, it really wasn't ever an option for the Carousel Foundation. The advisory committee didn't feel McEwen was the best spot for the carousel.
Thank you. So, other questions? We're going to get 5% of the profits from this. So, how are we calculating profits? As someone who comes from the quasi-entertainment industry, I know profits can be calculated in a number of creative ways.
Well, that was one reason we added that, being a nonprofit, they have to do a 990 every year, and that we've requested to see a copy of their 990, which will show if they made a profit, lost money, whatever. So, part of their IRS requirements to keep their nonprofit status is filing that 990 every year, and they will file the 990 with the city. So, we will see if they made money or lost money. And I'm sure they'll have probably an accountant and, and do that. So, we felt pretty, before IRS didn't have those 990 regulations for nonprofits, now they have it. So, we feel comfortable by auditing their 990 that we'll know if they made money or not.
And that, and if I understand, that goes into the Parks Capital Improvement Fund, but it will stay in that area?
Correct.
Very good.
Improvements in that area.
And then, how did we arrive on the $60,000 figure for the endowment?
That was kind of a negotiated figure between the foundation. I felt that the $60,000 would give them at least three years' operating capital. So, before they get started, they have at least three years' operating capital in the bank before they even start doing their first ride.
Excellent.
And we felt that was an achievable goal.
And how, how did we arrive upon the hours of operation, which is from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM?
That, again, is when I met with the Carousel Foundation. We felt that those would be the best operating hours for them. Granted, we know most of it's going during the middle of the day, but we want to give them the opportunity, if they do have special events, birthday parties, and then be done at 9:30 at night, because that's usually the time our softball games are done.
Is that, now, does that mean the music's going to be playing constantly during that time?
Could possibly. Yes.
Okay.
And that's one thing, maybe Rita can design, if there's no riders or anybody there, I'm sure they're going to have the music turned down pretty low. And then, if riders come, then, you know, for the experience, the music would be turned up a little bit. But I do not see them, and that's something we can talk to, keeping it one level all the time.
Yeah. What, and then, the duration, the time from here, in the, in the staff report here, it says from May 1st to October 3rd?
Yeah. It was April 1st. That was a typo on my, so the contract says April 1st, so it should be April 1st to October 3rd.
And why was that decided?
Why was that? That's pretty much what we felt was the season people come to Court Lane, and they did ask to be able, though, to have the option for the lighting parade for two or three special events during the year to operate the carousel. But I believe they felt that was the time they could staff it, have people there to do it, because November, December, January, February, March, probably not going to get many people coming down, and just for their season, for working with ours. That's usually the time we open up the parks, we start our softball seasons, hire our seasonals. So, mainly, we look at our season, kind of April 1st to October 1st for outdoor activities. So, we're coincided with that.
Thank you.
Coincides with the NIC softball season, our season, where you have people down there actually at the park.
Other questions for Steve?
What?
So, Steve, this is the first time I've seen this plan. Is this a new plan? Or have I missed something? Did my memory slip away?
This is a new road plan.
A new road plan?
Yes.
That we haven't seen yet?
Right. That's coming to you the next council meeting. So, to get, so basically, the road plan, this will be coming to you at your next council meeting. So, the carousel and the road are completely different subjects. So, the road plan... So the road plan, though, this one here, will be coming to the council at your next council meeting.
And the parking plan? Is that part of the road plan?
And this parking is also here. And so I could walk you through all this now, but you're gonna get a full presentation at the next council meeting on this.
Okay. The trees that you're putting this next to, are they getting to stay, those two big ones that you have your pile under?
Pardon?
Those big trees that are down there on the corner? Where you have your maintenance stuff parked?
Some of those, those, the majority of those trees will stay.
It's important that the trees stay. Okay. I heard a lot of that.
Actually, we're planting a lot of trees, too. We have, probably we're planting about twenty-some trees, too, in that plaza.
And so this plan will have public input still coming, or it already has?
This plan here, uh, the only group that has seen this plan here is the Fort Ground Homeowners Association. No, the street plan. I'm not talking about the carousel. The street plan hasn't changed, right here. So this is the exact same street plan that was presented at their meeting.
Does that include the left turn on the garden?
That one was a surprise to me when it was announced at the Park and Rec Commission meeting, so I didn't know about. So that one, uh, is going to be up to the council at our meeting next week. So I just, that one I didn't know about.
Okay.
So our consultant will be here to discuss that with you. So I don't want to, I don't want to kind of get lost in, uh, this, because this will be coming to you next week with Phil Boyd and Gordon Dobler, and this is more of the streets plan, so.
Amy?
On the sound, um, under the land lease agreement, um, number six, it states that the carousel should comply with the city's noise ordinance, which it stated. And the carousel further agrees that there will be no broadcasting of music outside of the building, and all speakers will be positioned away from the surrounding neighborhood. So the only sound that should be spilling is just a little bit out, as the mayor had mentioned.
Yeah. You know, if it's, if it's a perfect day and there's, you know, the wind's blowing towards the south, and there's no traffic on Northwest Boulevard, or it's a Sunday morning, there might be some sound. But we've tried to make every effort possible to make sure that the sound is directed, captured inside the building, and captured, you know, going towards Northwest Boulevard and the courthouse.
Can you put the diagram of the building again?
Yes.
So it's partially open and, yeah, partially enclosed?
Yeah. So they have the option, if it's bad weather, to close the doors on that, or if it's nice weather. You know, I'm guessing if you have a summer like this, it's probably gonna be open the majority of the time, you know, summer, spring. If we have one like we normally do, they're probably gonna be closed about thirty percent of the time.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay.
So what we've done as a staff is, we know we're not gonna please everybody a hundred percent, but we've tried to at least make, work with the neighborhood, and we've tried to work with the Carousel Foundation, and we hope, you know, knowing the people on the Carousel Foundation, they're good to work with, and they don't want to impede the neighborhood. So we hope we've reached something that's agreeable to most of the people. Okay.
So now, we'll open up to public comment, so maybe we'll, probably best if we started with Rita from the Carousel Foundation, and she can give us, uh, some information from the Carousel Foundation.
My name is Rita Snyder. I'm representing the Carousel Foundation. I do have some photos that they loaded for me. Can I show that slideshow? Let me get out of here. Okay.
You want me to get out?
Yes, please. With the stretched horses.
I know. Okay, so.
This one right here.
Which one, right here?
This is for carousel pics.
Right here?
Nope, up here. Right there, top. There you go.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay. I'm just gonna show this first, if that's okay. This carousel is a nineteen twenty-two Herschel Spillman carousel with twenty horses, two, um, chariots. It's a full sweep. Let's see if I can do, see if it's gonna let me. Okay. If I can do this. Okay, just do this. This is a small picture, but this is a very early rendering of the carousel, even before Playland Pier was in existence. And really can't tell for sure, but it really looks like it's the original carousel that was at Playland Pier for thirty-five years. We haven't been, this is fairly recent find. We haven't been able to find a lot more information. This is, of course, the Ross Hall photo circa nineteen forty-seven. This is another picture of the carousel, um, with a young rider and his mom, and I do remember that the mom's name was Ada. This is, um, I think Gary Nance on there. This is in the beginning. This is Julie Clark and Richard LaFrancis, when they first, um, they were very involved in the carousel. It was this article in the press that started the ball rolling on the foot, presenting us with the carousel. This is the carousel when it was in storage in Hood River, Oregon. The Perrins, Carol and Dwayne Perril, or Perrin, bought the carousel at auction. They found it at auction amazingly intact, purchased it, and completely restored it. They are carousel restorers and collectors, and this is when it was in their warehouse with their other carousels, before it came back to Coeur d'Alene. This is when it was on its way, loading it up. This is us unloading it when it arrived. This is Carol Perrin, and she is originally from Coeur d'Alene, and she always wanted the Playland Pier carousel to come back to Coeur d'Alene, and now it is here, fully restored, in storage, waiting to be set up. This is, again, the board then, Nancy and myself and Carrie and, and others, members of the board. This is when we had it in the Fourth of July parade that, um, Kiki talked about, who does, thanking John and Pat Foot, our benefactors. This is John and Pat Foot who gifted the carousel to our community. And this was at a fundraiser, a, a open house at the Blackwell Hotel. Some of the art panels from the inside of the carousel. Picture of the carousel in storage today. This is what the carousel looks like fully set up. This is at the Clackamas Valley Mall, and, uh, this is when it was, um, there with, I think, some other carousels. And you can probably see a little bit, the new art panels all around the top, which are depictions of our area. Originally, they were not depictions of our area, but when the Perrins redid it, they had a artist named Teresa Mathers, and she, um, used photographs of our area, and all the depictions on the carousel are now of our area, like the Fishian, um, the Fort Grounds, um, or Fort Sherman Gate, things like that. This is a, a picture of the carousel horses. This is Carrie at the market. We were doing fundraising this summer by selling, um, items at the market to help pay for storage and insurance. This is, again, um, the rendering that we have, that we believe the carousel will be fairly close to. Element Architecture was kind enough to do this rendering and design for us, and United Render Works did the rendering for us. It's very close to what it could be, about a fifty-by-fifty-foot building. They actually misspoke the dimensions. The carousel itself is thirty feet wide and approximately fifty foot tall. So with a fifty-foot building, you would have approximately ten feet on either side for moving and be able to load, you know, children on and off, so on. Might be able to be stretched a little bit larger than that, but we would stay within that thirty-two-hundred-square-foot footprint, including, um, the overhang from our roof, This is just that little bit of depiction, kind of highlighting where the carousel could be in front of Memorial, or in front of Memorial Field Grandstand. And that's just our logo, right there. So I had a few comments, if I can share those with you. First of all, we wanted to thank all that have helped us these last four years with donations and support to help pay for our, our insurance and storage. We appreciate their support. Also, I wanted to thank, uh, Welch Comer Engineers and Steve Anthony with the Parks and Recs Department for so diligently working on the many evolutions of this plan. We've been part of the discussions for years as part of this plan down here, and we are just very pleased that it may finally become a reality. The Carousel Foundation is a nonprofit. We were formed in two thousand and eleven, and we formed expressly to receive this gift. So, um, the gift from John and Pat Foot, who were actually newcomers to the area, they lived here for only a very short time, but they wrote a check for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to purchase this carousel for us, fully intact, ready to be set up. It is possibly the only known carousel to have left for decades its original location, it was here for thirty-five years, and to return to that location fully intact and fully After four years, we believe that this location is the absolute perfect location. It fits all of the criteria set forth by the National Carousel, uh, Founda, or Association for a successful placement of carousel. It fits all the criteria, and it has high visibility, it's near water, ease of access, parking, and a park setting. We believe that it is the best location, and it's the closest to where it originally was. This location, we believe, is even better than it would have been in McEwen. Not that McEwen is not a wonderful park, and it would have been a wonderful addition there, but Northwest Boulevard is the entrance to our city, and that's where most people see that location than anywhere else in the city. And it's high visitor count that makes carousels successful, not just local residents, but visitors that come to the area. Just want to make sure that we let everybody know that as a foundation, we would abide by all city ordinances, including sound. Music will be electronic and varied. We do not own a Wurlitzer Grand Organ. The speakers will be directionally placed away from the residential area and within the building only. I went down to the location and conferred with a sound specialist, and he assured us that the music would be very manageable, especially with all the other sounds that are always present in any city or any park. Even the tweeters on the speakers now can be directionally focused, and so, and also, we don't want it compared to other, you know, concerts in the park, those type of events. Those are very large broadcast speakers. That's not what will be in this. These will be up in the ceiling portion of the building, and they will be directed only away from the neighborhood. Also, the current plan places the carousel on the far side of the grandstand. That grandstand will act as a buffer, as will many of the trees in the park and the new trees that would be put in. So, you know, we were surprised that there might be some residents that aren't happy, you know, with the prospect, prospect of more sound in that area. With music and laugh, kids' laughter, we just, I think that that can be addressed. I really don't feel that that would be a problem going forward. You know, it was certainly not our intent to cause anybody, any, any worry in that area. You know, our intentions are just permanent placement of this piece of art and history. So, um, I don't know how much you need me to go into the business plan. We are expected to have a sixty thousand dollar endowment before we can break ground. So, the one thing that's really important for us right now, and that's why we're here tonight, is that every individual in group we've spoken with about fundraising first asks the question, where is it going to be? Until now, we cannot answer that question. Once the location is secured, secured with a lease, major fundraising can begin. Mr. Bud Ford, a local benefactor, excuse me. Has stepped forward with a generous offer of matching funds up to five hundred thousand dollars. He set the start date for the matching funds in July. He expected, and we expected, approval of this plan much sooner than it has happened. He will match funds for us up until December thirty-first. So that five hundred thousand dollars could go a long way to paying, you know, for much of our building, helping with our endowment, so to make sure that we have this going on into future generations. So obviously, as a foundation, we are very anxious to begin fundraising as soon as possible. You can send your donations to post office box one seven zero, Coeur d'Alene, eight three eight one six. We do expect tremendous community support, and this was a gift to our community. This was not a gift to the Carousel Foundation. This was a gift to our community, and it will be a wonderful community project. We feel the location is the best that we could have hoped for, and placed as presented in this new plan, this area will be very special. This will be Coeur d'Alene's historic heart. It's next to one of the few remaining historic wood grandstands. It's right by our historic park. It's right by our historic railroad battery building. It is an iconic combination. The carousel is an amazing gift to us, and we feel we need to honor the foot's generosity after providing a permanent home, so that everybody can enjoy it. Sadly, John Foot passed away. He did not get to see it put in place. But Mr. Bud Ford has stepped forward with his generosity, generosity to help us with our dream. So, we're asking you to vote in favor tonight. And I apologize, but this is very near and dear to my heart.
I've got a question.
Ron.
Rita, what was that, uh, number again, to send donations or contact?
Post office box one seven zero, Coeur d'Alene, eight three eight one six.
Thank you.
That was one seven zero.
One seven zero.
P.O. Box eight three eight one six.
Yeah, sorry.
Any other questions for Rita? Thank you very much.
I do apologize.
No, that's fine. Good job. Anyone else wishing to come up, can give public comment?
Marlo, you got the P.O. Box number right?
It is eight, eight three eight one six, not, that's the post office. I applaud Rita's presentation. I thought it was not only thorough, but extremely well-done. My name is Marlo Faulkner. I live at two oh seven Park Drive, and I have been on this carousel many, many times, albeit many, many, many years ago. Mr. Summers, Earl Summers, who ran Playland Pier, was a friend of all the kids in the neighborhood, and oftentimes we rode the carousel, the bumper cars, the swings, and everything else, as Mr. Edinger knows, without pain. And, uh, he took very good care of us. But I have, I do have some concerns. I love the carousel. I think it's a fabulous idea, but I live in front, we live in front of the park. And if you look at the contract that the City Parks Department puts out for people who use the park benchell, they cannot have sound amplified over there prior to noon on Sun, on Sundays, or any day. So I'm curious as to why this particular project could not conform to the other city rules. And there's, we always knew when Playland Pier was open, because we could hear the carousel, carousel in our neighborhood, and that's when you knew you could go up to the pier and you could go see Earl, and that was at noon. So I question that. I also question, as many of you know, my family has been in the tourist business in this town for many years, and I particularly remember that April is stormy month, and rain month, and wind month, and I think that maybe some thought should be given to changing that date to May first, because April is really, uh, I know that they try and play softball over in that field, and, uh, the speakers in that field are turned towards our neighborhood, and they have never been changed, and you can hear them well after ten o'clock, because those games don't always end at nine. In the contract, which I have read, it says that this building may be made, built of wood or brick, and I would suggest that it be designated brick, because wood does not contain sound, and, uh, talking about putting trees around it doesn't make much sense, because sound goes right through trees. We have found in our neighborhood that, uh, even though the city decibel level is sixty-five, no one oversees that, and we need to call the Park Department or the Police Department almost every weekend that there is amplified sound in the park. I see it in the photograph that it, this, the photograph suggested that there would be doors at the back of this building, and that perhaps the back half should be brick, and the opening should be at the front. It's a beautiful building. I think it's a wonderful addition to the city. I think Rita's point about where it is is well-taken, but the neighbors who have not seen this plan before, nor were we consulted on it, uh, and who put up with all of this all the time, uh, would like to see the time restricted, the months restricted, and some sort of, uh, implication that this sound will be overseen, because it certainly is not in the city park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Mr. Mayor, can I have Mr. Anthony come up and address some of the points that, uh, Marlo has raised?
Could, maybe we go through all the, can we go through all the public speakers?
Yeah, why not?
So if we have another public speaker on this issue, then you can-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Catch it all the end there.
Good evening. My name is Roger Snyder, and I live at, uh, three nineteen Park Drive. I do have a handout. Could I give it to Ron and get- Could I give it to Ron and pass it down? In the spirit of preserving our past, I am pleased that the carousel has been restored and is returning to Cordelane. On Friday, I obtained the proposed land lease agreement from the president of the Foregrounds Homeowners Association. Under paragraph four of the proposed lease, the hours and dates of operation of the carousel are from 10:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m. from April 1st to October 1st. This amounts to 11 and a half hours per day of operation and 80.5 hours per week. In addition to these hours, there's flexibility for the carousel to operate for other special events. The possibility of having to listen to carousel music, or any music, even at low levels for so many hours, amounts to an intrusion and a nuisance. In paragraph six, titled Compliance with the Law, the only relevant restriction on noise levels on operation by the Carousel Foundation is that it must comply with already existing city noise ordinance. After living on Park Drive for over 17 years, I know, my neighbors know, that under existing city noise ordinance, we hear loudly the amplified music from the bandshell, the amplified sound from the ball field, not only in our yards, but in our homes. But this amplified sound only lasts a few hours. In contrast, the amplified sound that will be allowed under the proposed lease may emanate from the carousel 11 and a half hours each day, which is most of my waking hours. That changes everything. This could become the unwanted soundtrack of my life. The lease agreement, as presently written, does not protect the residential neighborhood because the presently allowed sound level can and is heard even behind closed doors. As noted in paragraph 27, the Carousel Foundation has promised quiet enjoyment of their promises, or of their premises. I ask that the neighborhood be given the same right to quiet enjoyment that you are offering the Carousel Foundation. The simple way to offer the neighborhood the quiet enjoyment of their homes is to add a single sentence to the lease agreement. That sentence would read as follows. "In order to ensure the quiet enjoyment of their homes, the sound emanating from the carousel should not be audible in the residential neighborhoods." And as been indicated by the mayor and others, it sounds like that's really doable, that that would not be a problem. But adding that sentence would give reassurance to us that that would be the case. And who knows what's gonna, who's gonna be on the foundation five, 10 years from now? Who's gonna have the, you know, their hand on the volume? So, however it goes at first, may not be the case later on. And we would like some reassurance that our peace and tranquility is preserved. And it sounds like that's a very possible thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and to the foundation, I hope I'm not Rita. I can't tell you how happy I am to see our carousel come back. I've been in this community all my life, and I, Marlo and I know each other, we were in the fourth grade together. So, we're both a long time, and the foundation has done an absolutely beautiful job and a patient job, and requiring your patience as well to the many spots this could have gone and where it should have gone. But I see where it's going now to be the absolute perfect place, and Rita's right. In addition to that, Mr. Anthony, thank you so very, very much for all the interest you've had in keeping the sound down for the foregrounds and keeping it a livable thing that we can all enjoy. I've seen the horses every day because I know some of the places where they're stored. And so, they're absolutely beautiful. I want to thank Bud Ford for his incredibly, incredibly generous offer. And I want to tell each and every one of you, I was the first one to write the check. And I've given a substantial donation of $10,000 to the carousel, and I would invite anybody else to match it. So, good luck on your carousel, and I know we'll all enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to talk on the carousel issue?
Counsel, my name is Patty Jester. I live at 316 Forest Drive in the foregrounds. And I just have a couple of points I wanted to bring up. Just last week, I told someone about this issue that has come up, and this gentleman told me that he worked in the building in Spokane, just west of Spokane's carousel, and he worked inside of that building, and it's well over 50 yards from Spokane's carousel. And he could hear the music through the windows, not open windows, but just coming through the glass into his office space. So, he was very aware of the carousel music in Spokane into his office space. The other point I'd like to make, I am very much in favor of the carousel, as others have said, returning to Cordelane. However, I question if this is the best location over McEwen. McEwen Park has the parking and then the whole concentration of the Playland activity, the playgrounds, and everything for the children to be and to run and to go to different parts of it without worrying about crossing a city street. And there's been much discussion about keeping Mullen open, closing Mullen, or having it just for emergency vehicles at certain times of the year going through Mullen. And we have the children's play area in the city park, and then the carousel on the other side of Mullen. I think this is not a very good safety feature for strollers, families, and even more attraction. I was even in favor of putting concessions on the south side of Mullen so that people weren't, having two concessions, one at the ballpark and one in the city park, so there was less people having to go back and forth and children racing for a snow cone or now maybe a carousel. McEwen doesn't have that situation. You arrive, you spill out into the park, and you have the whole park area to get around in without having to worry about crossing a city street. And I think that's a point to take into consideration. The other point I was just curious about, I understand that, you know, we have the Ironman competition, and I understand that now Ironman's going to be two times in the summer, a full Ironman and then a half. Currently now, the Ironman, if it continues the configuration that it has, they use that whole parking lot to assemble, and they set up a week in advance. So, that's two, over two weeks in the summertime where possibly that parking lot is consumed with Ironman preparation and takedown that would have maybe some impact on the usability of parking and using the carousel. So, those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Others wish to speak on the carousel issue, please?
I also live in the foregrounds. And when I built my house 20 years ago, people asked me, "Why would I move down to the foregrounds?" Because there's a lot of noise and activity. And you know what? There is. And it's the most exciting place to live because it's positive energy. There's not machines running through, there's not gangs, there's not police, there's not fire engines. It's a wonderful place. Everything in there, the school, the activities, it's a positive music. I felt the first year I was on vacation because of the races and the organizations and involvement down there. That is the best place for it because it came home. The carousel come home, and it's back to where it's been. And I feel really bad that people have such objection to noise because apparently, by listening to the program we've had, there's been a lot of research and a lot of work done to make sure to accommodate that. The one thing I didn't even realize until I sat there tonight, what happened to the bagpipes? Does anybody know? It's, it was a wonderful volume of music that went through our town year after year. And I didn't even realize it was gone until I heard the complaints tonight about the And they went through our town, our streets, every day while they were there practicing and learning. Please allow the carousel to come back to its home.
Sharon, introduce your name.
My who?
Your name.
My name?
Oh, I think she, just name for the record.
Oh, excuse me. My name is Sharon Colbreth. I live in the foregrounds.
Thanks. Thank you. Next person to wish to speak on the carousel?
Hi, my name is Chris Nannely. I'm actually one of the members of the Cordelane Carousel Foundation, and I've been with them pretty much from the beginning on. And Rita asked me to come up and kind of address, there's been some questions about location, where, you know, putting it in McEwen versus the city park or Four Corners. And we have, as a foundation, long before we've even reached this point, been in lots of discussions as to where, it's even looked at Riverstone as a possibility, McEwen as a possibility. And we, as Rita says, any place that you put the carousel, whether it would be McEwen or Riverstone, or right in the middle of city park, there's going to be someone who says there's noise. There's going to be always objections regardless of where you put it. So, we are kind of looking more at the whole, putting it in Four Corners, like with the ball field, that this is a historic location and it can be a historic landmark for future years. I had written this before I came, and I were debating whether to say it or not, but I can personally say that even outside of the constant hard work and dedication from all of the foundation members that has been, made it possible for us to be standing here in front of you today, the overwhelming community support wherever we go has been a huge part of us being here as well. My daughter, son, and I recently sat all day at one of the parks department, summer kids and event, park events, representing the carousel. And people of all ages came up to me expressing their excitement at the carousel coming and how they have been eagerly following the news in this and thanked us for all of our efforts in making this an awesome community project possible. I've personally raised five kids of my own and cannot begin to tell you in the last 25 years how many theme parks, fairs, carnivals my kids and I have been to. But I will tell you this, that no matter if it's in Disneyland, Silverwood, or the carnival at the fair, or a standalone ride in the center of town, one of the longest lines is always for the carousel. It is the only ride which is timeless and does not need special effects to make it fancier or loud music to attract people. A line where age doesn't matter, you will see young people and old people and little babies making their first ride ever in this line. A carousel is a standalone work of art, and I am sure there is not one person in this room or even in this community that does not have at least one memory connected to the carousel at some point in their life. Our community has been given the opportunity of a lifetime with the gift of the Playland Pier Carousel to bring a piece of Cordelane history back to its original home and create many more memories for years to come for those children in our future. And we, as the Cordelane Carousel Foundation, hope that someday, in 80 years from now, someone will look back to the state in time and remember how they took their first ride on the Cordelane Carousel. You can make this possible by voting in favor of us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on the carousel?
I'm Karen Lawson, and I live at 333 Park Drive, which is right at the northwest corner of the park. And I just want to say that we are not mean-wining people who hate carousels. Most of the people in the foreground welcome the carousel. There's a reason why we're cautious about noise pollution. For over 10 years now, I've been working towards getting NIC to turn down their speakers in Memorial Field when they have ballgames there. True, they have gone down a little, but they often go right back up again. And I've talked to everyone I can think of about that problem. I've done research on it. I have copies of the city's noise ordinance, which I've discovered are pretty much ignored by a lot of people. Most of the people who use, well, who use speaker systems in the park or in Memorial Field do not have decibel meters, nor do they even know what the city ordinance requires. And so, I've pretty much given up on that because we all know the definition of insanity. And so, that's why some of us are a little bit paranoid about noise pollution. The spring and the fall are when NIC has their softball games, and they're the only ones really who use a speaker system, and their speakers are pointed in our direction. And you can clearly hear it oftentimes inside your home and in the back alley as well. And I no longer go out to work in my yard in the spring and the fall when I know that they're having games. And so, that's partly why we're just a little bit paranoid about noise. But it sounds to me like you're working very hard to see everyone that's in the Carousel Association, that that will not happen with the carousel, and that would be my hope. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's one other person that wished to come up and speak?
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Landers, and I live at 112 North Forest Drive, which also is the foregrounds. I moved there in 1986, and I was thrilled to move there. I felt lucky to be there, and I still am amazed that we have such an amazing neighborhood. I don't think it's noisy. I don't think there's too much going on. In fact, I wonder, what happened to Ironman? What happened to Ironman for kids? What happened to parents that could park on our street and walk to the park? I am 100% for the carousel. I've never once felt it was too loud in our neighborhood. I would like to see the carousel, and I think most of the people in Cordelane would also like to see it. I have four sons. They ran all over the park, tubs hill, swam. And I would like to see my grandkids get on the carousel, and I don't know of any other city that would have this opportunity. I didn't move there to complain. I didn't move to a gated community where there are rules, where there's no noise, where kids don't run around. I'm happy to be there, and I hope our city council will bring it on.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the carousel issue?
Hi, my name is Deb Cordis, and I live at 319 Park Drive, which is literally across the street from the city park, and I can see the bandshell and also the ball field from my front porch. I've lived here for 17 years. I too am a huge fan of the carousel. I welcome the carousel to the neighborhood. I see it as a historic piece of art, and I believe it belongs in the city's oldest historic neighborhood. So, I think this is a great place for it. When the city issues a permit for amplified sound for the bandshell or the ball field, I can hear that amplified sound both in my front yard, my backyard, and even in my home with doors and windows closed. So, the existing sound ordinance does not keep the sound out of our, even our homes. I have never called the city to complain, or I've never appeared before the park commission meeting or your city council meeting to complain because I know the concert in the bandshell or the ballgame is only going to last for a few hours, you know? And I want the city to thrive. There should be concerts, and there should be ballgames. Those are great for a city, just as a carousel is. Words are important in lease. And right now, if you look at the lease, the only real restriction on the Carousel Foundation is that it shall comply with the city's noise ordinance. That noise ordinance, as it presently exists, doesn't protect our neighborhood from hearing this amplified sound in our yards and in our homes. You know, Mr. Anthony said he, quote, "Thinks the majority of the..." You know, Mr. Anthony said he, quote, "thinks the majority of the sound will be contained, and the actions taken," quote, "will hopefully will mitigate the sound into the neighborhood." You know, the mayor, you've said that the noise is not going to be an issue, and that is perfect. I think that's the only controversy here regarding the carousel coming to this area of town. But this is a 15-year lease, and the current carousel board might not be on that board for 15 years. And maybe all of you won't be on the city council for 15 years, you know? I think that what the neighbor, maybe you will. But I think what the neighborhood would like is some written assurance in the actual lease that in the event enforcement is needed in the future, the city will have some words to enforce. You know, we've given you the words in our handout in order to ensure the quiet enjoyment of their homes. The sound emanating from the carousel shall not be audible in the residential neighborhoods. I support that sentence. I wouldn't mind if you modify it and say the carousel, the sound emanating from the carousel shall not be audible outside of Memorial Field. Or, as the mayor suggested, greater than 50 feet from the carousel. Those are all modifications that I think would solve this possible controversy. And I would like you to please put a sentence in the lease that we can have enforced if there is a sound problem in the future. If there's no problem, those words will never get enforced. And I don't think, does anyone really mind a sentence like that in the lease? I don't hear anyone saying it's even a problem. So is there a problem putting it in the lease? That's what I would ask you from the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Faulkner. I live at 207 Park Drive, across the street from the City Park. I am addressing you with mixed feelings. I support the carousel. I believe the carousel is a wonderful addition to our community. I am frustrated because of all the times that we've been involved, the city's been involved in anything to do with the park, Memorial Field, whatever, even Mullen. We have always been consulted. We've always had a chance to voice our concerns to whoever is making a proposal. This is the only time the city has never come to the Foreground Home Association asking what they thought about it. We are the biggest stakeholder here. We are the only ones that are going to be affected. And it's all well and good for you people to sit here and make this decision that we're faced with 15 years of listening to music without any guarantee that we're not going to hear it. There's nothing that's said here tonight, Steve, that convinces me that you have the sound under control. Nothing. There's nothing in writing. These people are going to volunteer for 15 years. These people are going to volunteer to man that carousel. I would predict that carousel will be out of business in five years because these people are going to get tired. In 15 years, they're still going to be volunteering to run the carousel. And I think it's on very shaky grounds that you people are even considering approving this when you have no guarantee that this is going to even last any amount of time. So you need to keep in mind, you're talking about our peace and quiet, not your peace and quiet, because only one of you live in the foregrounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to talk about this issue? Steve, Anthony, if you want to come up, and then there may be some council people that have some questions for you and maybe others?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anthony, let's talk about sound. Do we have any restrictions in our, and Mr. Gridley, I may ask you to weigh in if you can. I'm sorry, this is probably not something you have at your ready. But are sound ordinance on Sunday, is there a restriction on sound?
Yes, there is.
And what is that?
The 65 decibel, whatever the city's sound.
But not a time restriction?
There's not a time restriction. I believe the concerts can't start until 12 o'clock, 1:00. I'm not quite sure on that one. I think, Mike, I might need some help on that for the...
There's nothing in the ordinance about time. I think if there is, there's a park rule, you might have to establish.
Yeah, it's just more of a park rule that...
No, we're not, we're not going to allow that.
Now, the construction can't start until 7:00, so I would assume 7:00 is kind of when this thing kicks in.
Yeah, but we've got softball tournaments that start at 8:00 in the morning. They have sound, and we have activities. Iron Man sets up at 7:00 in the morning. They have amplified sound in the park. So, yeah, we, so there is, to answer you, there are events that do start at 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 that do have amplified sound in the City Park.
And who is the one who determines 65 decibels? Is that, does, does the park guys go out? Because when they had the, the one, there was a rally in the, in the park over the weekend, and there was a city employee there who had a decibel meter.
Yes. Our employees have decibel meters for the concert series. Chris has his own decibel meter, so we've let Chris, as the promoter, do the readings on that. So if we get a complaint, they follow up. But the park crew that is on site also has a decibel meter to confirm those readings.
And what about, it was mentioned about safety on Mullen. What about kids who are going to be crossing Mullen to go to the, is that part of the bigger picture with the...
That's part of the bigger picture. My slide disappeared. I guess I probably closed it here on Mullen. But as you know, coming to you next week, Mullen is going from five lanes down to two lanes, and then also the, between the two roundabouts, there will be a plaza on there. Shoot, I don't see where my PowerPoint went anymore. Because that's the fireboat. It was down on the bottom here. So, but Mullen then is between basically the park entrance now and where, say, the restrooms would be in City Park. That is going to be a plaza in there. And so basically pedestrians, our idea is to bring the park to Memorial Field. So we don't feel that will be a, actually, we're pedestrian-friendly for events on that. So you've got to remember now, that's five lanes.
Yeah.
So basically, all those lanes go away.
Well, three of them. The Iron Man, talk about that a little bit. I mean, has there been any discussion in the city if we implement the plan, the one that's shown there? What, where is Iron Man set up? How does that impact the carousel?
We haven't talked with them yet. I don't believe Iron Man, Iron Man's going to be, affect everybody. It always does down there, just trying to get to the park. But that parking now will be paved. We'll be able to still, there'll still be ample room for Iron Man to set up. That parking, where they are dirt now, will be paved. But we still have the dirt area then, basically past Memorial. You look at the third base down to what people called the old chicken shack or Burlington Northern. So there'll be room for Iron Man to, we've always made it work in there somehow. Iron Man does take up a lot of space, but with the plaza, with that area, with the street going away, there'll be actually a little bit more room for them. We think it'll be paved parking instead of dirt parking now.
So hypothetical situation, so say the, say the Carousel Foundation does go belly up in a few years. What, what would happen?
Basically, if they go belly up, then they would have their endowment fund to go with. So they'll be operating a couple of years on their endowment fund. If they do go belly up, part of the lease is, and they remove all the equipment at their expense. It goes back into storage, and the city gets the building for whatever use we deem on that. So if they do go, there's an escape clause for the city there if they don't make it. And it's escape clause for them a little bit, too. That was something that was pretty easy to negotiate with them. If they're not making it, they're willing to pull out, and the building becomes the city's, and we get a nice picnic shelter. We can run out for events and other activities.
Thank you. I'm just going to, and I know, Mr. Gridley, you probably haven't seen this, but this is proposed to add this to our agreement. The wording says, "In order to ensure the quiet enjoyment of their homes, the sound emanating from the carousel shall not be auditable in the residential neighborhoods." Do you have any comment on that, especially with regards to enforcement? It seems like the burden would be on the city to determine what audible means.
While, Your Honor, while Mike works on the ordinance, I think that we need to make a distinction between a softball game where you're broadcasting out to a crowd, or a concert where you're broadcasting out to a crowd, and a carousel where the calliope music is just a part of the ambiance, it's part of the experience as they're riding the horses. They're not trying to broadcast out to a large crowd. They're trying to create that music within the facility. So it's a much different effort in terms of where you're providing sound as opposed to other experiences.
And we did have our park and rent commission meeting, Jim Lean was there, and he explained to us, there's different sounds. For a concert in the park, their equipment, they have fairly heavy-duty equipment, speakers they're broadcasting. For a carousel, their equipment is completely different for that type of music. The speakers are different, your tweeters are different, the bass. So he says it's a completely different sound system that you would have, say, if you're putting on a concert, one of the big, big parks.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Gridley wanted to say something.
A couple things. I think, just so we're clear, there's...
Press buttons.
Yes, God.
Yes, God. Just to be clear, there is, in residential zones, a timeframe from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. of the 65 decibels. And so that's, can be measured. That is a restriction in any residential zone, foreground, or any other in the city. After that, in the evening, it's 55. So that's just general knowledge. When we looked at the lease, this is governed by our amplified music, or the music we're talking about, I think would be governed by our amplified music ordinance, dealing with noise abatement. And it says it's unlawful, or it shall be unlawful for any person to operate or permit the operation of any sound amplification system on a street, highway, blah, 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 park, within the city limits of Coeur d'Alene in such a manner as to disturb the peace, quiet, or comfort of a reasonable person, and/or so that the sound is plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or more from the sound amplification system. So this is our existing ordinance. It says if it's plainly audible beyond 50 feet because of the sound amplification, then that's unlawful. Plainly audible is defined as any audible sound that can be detected by a person using his or her unaided hearing faculties. So if somebody's playing something, it's audible, plainly audible beyond 50 feet, in such a manner as to disturb the peace and quiet of a reasonable person, it'd be violating our ordinance. Clear to... The other point, I think, when this was brought up earlier, the lease clearly says that there will be no broadcasting of music outside of the building. So when you think about it, any music that's being broadcast is broadcast inside of a building. And so to meet this, violate this ordinance, it would be music coming from inside the building as opposed to outside. That would have to be plainly audible at a distance more than 50 feet. So...
Thank you.
Other questions? What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that council approve agreement with our resolution number 15055, which is an agreement with the Coeur d'Alene Carousel Foundation for the lease of land within Memorial Field Plaza.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to say that as a young boy, I had the pleasure of riding the carousel as well. I think probably you did, too, Mr. Mayor. And so it's very exciting for me. I think it was in 2009 when I first ran for council, Mr. La Francis had called me and told me that they had obtained the carousel. And I didn't believe him, that there's no possible way. So thank you to the foundation and everybody that's been involved, and to the people that are willing to step up and match those donations, to those of you that made the donations, to the neighbors, Roger, Deb, the Faulkners, and the others with the concerns. I sympathize with you. I live in Pine Grove Park and near Doyle's Wholesale. And so if you all remember, this is, this is kind of reminiscent, some of the comments of, of, you know, my neighbor's concerns with Doyle's. And Doyle's has proven to be a great neighbor, and I think that the carousel people will be, will prove to be great neighbors as well. So I think that the code already, basically, for all intents and purposes, has the language that you would like to add. And, you know, anything beyond that, I think is subjective. So I, I'm pretty confident that everybody's going to be happy with this. So I am very much in favor of it.
Any further discussion? Kiki?
I just had one comment, and I wanted to be clear that I also never, didn't have the pleasure, hope to. Love the carousel. The thing that just still felt awkward to me is that we're leasing the development within a park, that the approval of the development of that park hasn't come to council yet. So that's where I was still, you know, I don't, I know that this community's gone through a lot of issues over parks and their development and what happens. And so I just felt it was a little awkward to say, we have not approved a plan for Memorial Park, or the Four Corners, or the VLM property, and yet we're leasing to an organization to develop a piece of that. How I settled that in my mind is that regardless of, if an ounce of dirt surrounding this leased property ever got moved, we're well within the bounds of doing what we're going to do to provide for the space for the carousel. So that was my comment about the entire thing.
Call for the question.
Thanks. Roll call, please, Renah.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. And I wanted to just add, I just wrote some words down here. And the words that I wrote were, "history, culture, volunteers, volunteers giving their time, private donations." We talk about, maybe we spend some money where we shouldn't spend. I think Kathy reminds of that maybe sometimes. But these are private dollars coming in. And people are getting their checkbooks out, and they're writing checks. And then finally, I wrote down the citizens that care. And I think all of those things and everything that this Carousel Foundation has done goes to show what our community is about. And so I want to thank you for all your work on that. We will recess for five minutes. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. And the order is, Monty, you're up there, so you must think that you're next on the edge.
Mr. Mayor, we do have...
Oh, we have a couple of things we got to do here. Announcements, anyone have, does the city council have an announcement?
I actually do. Thank you. So I was asked to do this by KMPO, which is the Coutenay Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a board I serve on. And what they are looking for are some volunteers to serve on a subcommittee called the KCAT, which examines in more detail the topic of transportation in the county. And they're coming up short for volunteers, so I was asked to tell people watching, and it could be people outside the city, too, if they would like to volunteer to serve on this subcommittee. These are non-voting members. That's not my fault. I wanted them to be voting members, but I was voted down, which is ironic in itself. And there are five of these non-voting members who can volunteer to be on the board. They would be in these specific areas, aviation, rail, bicycle and pedestrian, public transportation, and trucking, freight, logistics. And they would be meeting monthly on the fourth Tuesday of the month for your schedule. If you want more information, you can go to the KMPO website, which is kmpo.net, and it has more information there, including the applications for you to apply if you're interested in serving in the capacity on one of those positions. And it's my hope that in the future, those are voting positions. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else in the council? I do have an appointment to the... I do have an appointment to the, actually, four appointments to the natural open space committee. I'd like to appoint John Bruning, Adrian Cronbar, Michael Walker, and June McLean. So I'd be looking to get a motion for that.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, Monty.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think you were going to do general public comment after the public comment specific.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Is there anyone that wishes to give general, just a general public comment?
Yes.
Sorry for skipping over that.
I'm Keith Peela, 3537 Highland Drive. I'm a bit concerned with the Third Street boat ramp operation. Couple of years ago, there were a number of us that fought to save that ramp. And the last couple of years, it's just been kind of iffy what's going on there. But this year, it just kind of amazes me what's happened. We've gone from costing, say, $6 to park your rig, to $10, to $15. So I don't know who's governing that. Hopefully not Diamond Parking, because number one, that parking machine there should be thrown away. The Third Street ramp is the best ramp on this lake, bar none. But I think it's ridiculous that we're charging three times as much as the BLM launch, or the state waterways launches, or Honeysuckle Beach. And, you know, it's going to stop usage down there. And the other thing concerns me is the rental boat and jet ski people, they dominate that dock. Sometimes you have to wait for them to move their rigs to get off the ramp. And then when we started charging this launch fee, I can't imagine somebody from the city not being smart enough to go down to the BLM and steal one of their envelopes that has a receipt stub on it. Because when I went to pay, here's the little brown envelope, no way to get a receipt, and they want you to put $5 in the box. Now, that doesn't make sense to me, a way to run a business. And that meter, you should go out to Honeysuckle Beach. You punch the button, it gives you an option of what you want to do. Launch a boat, park your car. You punch that button, it tells you how much to pay, and it's done. The last time I went in down here, like I say, I parked for five hours, I had to run my card through the machine three times to get it to work, and it cost me $10 for parking for five hours. Now, when the old Third Street boat ramp was there, if you parked down there with your tow rig and your trailer, you paid the same fee as somebody parking a car up in the upper lot. Then you paid your launch fee. So it usually ran $6 to $10 a day, which I can live with. But this deal now, I don't know, who is in charge of that?
Troy, can you comment on that?
Absolutely. The rates have not changed, Mr. Peela, so that is no change. We have the same fees that we did previously. The double parking is what should have been charged when you have a boat and trailer in days gone by, when you were parking on the lower lot with your boat and trailer. So you've got a real buy in days gone by. And the launch fees have not changed at all since we've entered into the new situation. And of course, the plan was not for the launch to be there. So we are attempting to get better at collecting the launch fees, and specifically working with those commercial customers that are down there launching vehicles for individuals. So it's an activity that takes place.
And Troy, there's an option, you have to walk a little further, but there's an option of free parking over right next to City Hall.
Correct, yes.
Well, I'm just sure that last summer and the beginning of this summer, when you put your card in there, it didn't say a double parking spot. And then it changed later, about the time they turned the machine around, so it wasn't facing the sun and you could read the dial.
Mr. Peela, maybe if you wanted to just leave your contact information with Jim Hammond, and then maybe we can get more of these questions answered for you in detail.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, because, like I say, that's the best ramp, but I could just, I don't know why we have to charge three times as much as anyplace else.
Okay, we'll get those answers for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, well, I was going to follow up with Mr. Hammond, but he's talking to Mr. Peela.
Oh.
A few months ago, we asked, a council asked staff to look into the parking situation at McEwen, which includes, I think, the boat ramp. Is that still in progress?
That's still in progress.
Okay.
There's a discussion occurring. That's still in progress. Thanks, God. The discussion is occurring between Mayor and Troy, and myself, and Diamond Parking. We have a contract that's ready to go, but we had some concerns with that, so we're still trying to work that over.
Very good, thank you.
The other player is the Downtown Association.
Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay, we will move on. Monty, you ready? We have resolution number 15-053, approval of amendments to the 2010 Trails and Bike Ways master plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Came to you about a month and a half ago with another update to the master plan. At the time, we talked about how the Ped Bike Committee is currently updating the master plan. Won't be ready till either the end of this year, beginning of next year. But we have been working extensively with engineering to try to incorporate some of the bike lanes that are in the existing plan, and getting some of the low-hanging fruit to get it done, so we can apply for bike-friendly status next year, and hopefully achieve silver. While we're at it, we have some new things coming into the update that were also easy fixes and easy lanes to add. And so we decided that maybe we should talk, add some things to the agenda, or to the, update the master plan, so we can add those to the streets. We, I came to you last month, we striped one of the streets here in Coeur d'Alene, and this time, we have a few more that it's possible we could paint in this year. Not necessarily going to happen, it depends on how much paint the street department has. They're running low, but they're going to paint as much as they can. But at least if we don't get it painted, at least we'll have it, so that the street department can budget and add that to their paint budget for next year, for next spring. The streets that we want to add are Fourth Street on the east side, from Safeway to Harrison. Last year, the year before, we striped from Harrison north to, nearly to the freeway, just on the east side. Removed parking, there's nobody ever parked there. We'd like to go down all the way to Safeway, that's where the road begins to widen. Below Safeway, that is too narrow to add a bike lane. I've got a map of it right here. So this is Safeway down here at the bottom. These are all the businesses affected, and this up here is Harrison. I did send, after General Services, I did send notices out to all the businesses along here. Ten businesses, ten addresses, got no responses for that particular area. So that would be removing parking and adding a bike lane, that's why we sent out the notices. Another area was Hubbard Avenue, between Lincoln Way and Northwest Boulevard. And this would also involve removing parking on both sides. So we sent out three notices to the three different property owners here. We did get one response back from this property owner, saying that he was not in favor of removing the parking, because his customers use this area. But I do see he does have a parking lot. We also sent out notices to nine people, business owners and property owners, on Lincoln Avenue from Harrison down to Idaho Street. There are only a few houses, and the rest are businesses that would be affected. We'd actually leave parking from Harrison to Short Avenue, and add a bike lane in addition to parking on the one side, but remove parking on the other side. So, and everywhere else, we'd just have the bike lanes, no parking. We sent out nine notices, had one response, and he was in favor of it. So out of 22 notices, we've had two responses, one in favor and one against. I spoke with Tim Martin on how much it would cost to add this much paint. It's approximately about two and a half miles of paint that'll go on the ground. And it's about, I think it's at $118 a mile, so around $295 would be the total cost for additional paint. And we're hoping we can get that out here in the next couple of weeks, if we have enough paint.
Questions for Monty. Woody.
Monty, you're doing Fourth Street, my neighborhood midtown, correct?
What's that?
Midtown, Fourth Street.
Uh huh.
So it's only on one side of the street?
Yeah.
So which way does the bike go? The same with traffic, or can you come down that trail against traffic?
No, with traffic.
So it's only going north?
Right. Third Street has one going south with traffic as well.
Okay. Bike riders know that, right?
They're supposed to. They don't, they don't always obey that.
Okay, thanks.
I do have one more thing to add. There actually is another lane that would be striped, but we didn't send notices out because there's no parking being removed. And that would be lanes on Potlatch Hill Road that would take people from the Centennial Trail up to the Fernand Natural, Lake Natural area. So, of course, they can't ride their bikes on those trails, but they can park their bikes there and hike.
Other questions for Monty? Okay. We'll be looking for some council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve a resolution 15-053, which is approval of amendments to the 2010 Trails and Bike Ways master plan.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a couple of seconds. Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to repeat what I frequently say whenever we talk about bicycles and the Ped Bike Committee, is that I think that should be a higher-ranking committee in the order of things. I think it should report directly to council and cover transportation issues, which would include sidewalks and accessibility and other issues. And I seem to be the only one who talks about that, so...
And you're consistent.
I am very consistent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
I thought this was where you were saying...
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you... I didn't mean to... Well, yeah, actually, on Potlatch Hill, Monty, how wide are those lanes going to be?
Depending on how much room we have, they'd either be five or six feet wide. I don't have that number exactly in my head right now, how wide it is, but we'd still leave at least a 12-foot travel lane.
Okay. And that's, so, fire and...
Yeah, higher speed, 35 miles an hour.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, now roll call. There we go.
All right. Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Now, we will go on to other business. This is resolution 15-054, acceptance of bid and purchase of a 32-foot fireboat from Armstrong Marine, Inc. Looks like we have Chief Gabriel's going to give us the report on this.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, before you give your report, can you give us an update on the Tubbs Hill fire?
It is 100% contained.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, dear crew.
Okay. Good evening. I'm thrilled to death to be here on many levels. Best level is, as you recall, in May of this year, we went to the public and asked for $5 million to do a public safety bond to buy the capital equipment for the fire department. And we're here today to ask your permission to purchase the first piece of equipment that we spec. This process is rather arduous, and the boat is first only because it got done the fastest, and because it didn't take as much time as three fire engines, an aerial apparatus, a ladder truck, and a brush truck. So those are going to come to you next meeting. But now we're here to ask permission to accept a bid from Armstrong Marine. We opened bids about three weeks ago. We had two bidders that came in. Armstrong Marine submitted this boat, and it's exactly as we spec. Some highlights of the boat are, the big thing for us is, you know, we have a lot of things on the lake that concern us. And one, as you know, you asked about the fire, we had our 15th fire on Tubbs Hill this afternoon, our 15th of the year. And one of the things we want to do with this boat is have the ability to fight fire on that hill from the lakeside. And the second, which is very important, is we want to be able to get patients, many, many people are on the hill, many people, we have to get off the hill, and it's very difficult to move them from point A to point B. If you look in the front of this, it's a landing craft style vehicle. And what it does is that front has two hydraulic rams, and it comes down, and we can load patients right onto the boat. So that was something that was very important. The second thing we've heard a little bit about is can it draft? How much can it draft, meaning how far can the boat go in shallow water? This was designed to go straight up to the side of Tubbs Hill. So that's about as narrow it is, you know, as shallow it's going to get for us. So this is the boat that we are asking you to approve. And the budget that we presented to you, and you approved from the general obligation bond, we asked for a $450,000 budget. In that, we were going to get the 32-foot landing craft style boat, the hydraulic rams I spoke about, 1,500 gallons per minute. That's the exact same amount of water pumped by one of our new pumpers. So it will pump an enormous amount of water, and it's volume and pressure. So what we need, if we can't get the water to the top of Tubbs Hill, like where the fire is right now, we're not really doing what we need. This has the ability to do both, dump out enormous amounts of water, but then do it with a great deal of pressure as well. As a large working deck, which is incredibly important for us, because if we have something with the boat accident where there's a number of patients, we need to be able to work on them outside and inside as well. We do have a heated cabin for patient care, where we can put as much as eight people inside. The big thing for us is the state-of-the-art navigation electronics. Mr. Mayor, I want to give you an update on this. I know we've talked about that side scan sonar. This will come with a version of that. What that is, is it's a sonar that can go down and literally show if there's a person down there. Now, the type we're going to get is not quite as elaborate as some of the stuff we've seen, where you can literally see if there's silt on top of somebody down there. It's that precise, but we will be able to see if something is down there, a little more than just a regular sonar will. We'll have the flare system, and what that is, is the guys can literally see at night. So it's got as good a state-of-the-art package that we can have on that. The bid price came in at 43, at $439,000. There's a bunch of things we talked with the finance director and city administrator about. We're asking you to approve $402,104 and change. And the equipment for the boat, we will be taking everything off of the old boat that we possibly can, and putting it on the new boat. And our equipment package for the new boat will be roughly $18,000. So the good news is, we're going to be coming in significantly under budget. The good news is, they're giving us a two-year warranty instead of one that most folks give, and that it is in Port Angeles, so we can get over there to see how the boat's doing much easier than flying back east. And if you approve, we will send the contract in, and 120 days, we will accept the boat.
Okay. Questions for Chief? Woody.
Chief, do you have a trailer for this thing?
We will, yes, sir.
And you can pull it with one of your rigs?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief, in the staff report, it talks about marina fires.
Yes, sir.
And it says that thieves are creating fires. Can you explain how that works?
They have, in the past. People go in and try to rummage through boats, and what they've found, what we have seen actually happen, is they get the flare guns, they think it's fun to shoot them, and puff, up goes the flare gun, back down it's come, and start the boat fire. So that literally has happened before at the marina right over here. Something that happened this summer, which was kind of nerve-wracking to us, is they also have some of these, and we found these, they're projectiles, that you can shoot out of like a starter's pistol, if you will. And we found approximately a dozen of these all around the area back here, and they go up and they float down. The good news is, these did not start any fires, but these are the type of things that we have seen right here, this year. So some interesting stuff.
That is weird, and, I mean, who would have thought? I guess my brain doesn't work that way, and I'm glad it doesn't. So mutual aid, let's talk about mutual aid.
Yes, sir.
So if we're going, we have mutual aid agreements with other fire departments. So say, for example, you had the Cape Horn fire, would we take our boat to that, or how would that work?
You know, we look at any request for service on... You know, we look at any request for service on if we could provide that service. The Cape Horn fire would have been tough, because my number one priority is to the citizens of Coeur d'Alene. So, could we take it to Cape Horn, council member? Yes, we can. Would we have at that time? I can't tell you if we would have or not. But we do, we will have the ability to do just that.
And will the boat be in the water year-round?
That's our goal, yes, sir.
And do you know where we're going to be putting it? 11th Street for now?
Well, for now, I've been talking to Mayor and the administrator. We're trying to get something secured someplace else in the community where we will have it in the water all year-round.
Okay. Let's see. So, you answered the draft question, which I do appreciate. And how much of our old boat, so we're going to keep the old boat, the one that you have now?
Probably not.
We're not going to keep it?
Probably not.
So, we're going to take everything off of that we can and put it in the new boat?
Yes, sir.
Save some money that way?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. And with the money that we're saving on this, I guess, it's too little too early, because we don't have the rest of the equipment, to discuss what we're going to do with that savings, because that may get put into the new equipment?
It very well might, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So, I'll save that question for next time.
I look forward to it, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we take the old boat out in the middle of the lake and blow it up?
Shoot a flare at it.
That'd be up to you, council member. You can talk amongst your peers here and make that decision. So, yes.
Oh, and that actually brings up another, thank you, Steve. So, okay, so Steve's talking about a ceremony here.
Yes.
Proper burial.
When we break up, burial at sea. When we get the new boat, is there, are you going to have a big to-do about that?
You know how much your fire department loves pomp and pageantry. I will promise you, we will do it up quite nicely.
I expect it. Thank you.
Yes.
Ron?
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of Resolution 15-054.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Renata?
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for passage of A-14 annex, I'm sorry, I'm a page off and a dollar short tonight. I would like to move for A-215 annexation of Burlington Northern Railroad, Highway 95 to Hubbard, and approve the findings in order.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.
Move for Council Bill 15-1023, Annexation and Zoning Designation Ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Or not, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 15-1023, An Ordinance Annexing To and Declaring to Be a Part of The City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho Specifically Described Portions of South Half of Section 11 and the North Half of Section 14, Township 50 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for a severability clause, providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
And I'm not sure who I missed.
Eddinger.
Eddinger, sorry. Eddinger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move, approve, let me try again. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of ZC-1-15, Miller Development, Approval of Findings in Order.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
One item. I had a phone call from a woman named Marion Sharza, who asked if I was involved in the Miller Development item that was on the agenda, and I assured her I was not, and I would make that statement prior to making this decision.
Different Miller, huh?
Lots of Millers are...
Give it anything to do with the beer?
I thought it was you, too.
No, nope, not me.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve Council Bill 15-1024, Zoning Designation Ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Renata, if you'd read the title, please.
Council Bill 15-1024, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Act of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Known as Ordinance Number 1691, Ordinances of the City of Coeur d'Alene. By changing the following described property from R12, residential at 12 units per acre, to C17, commercial at 17 units per acre, said property being described as followed to wit, approximately 1.78-acre parcel at 3113 Government Way, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, provide for the publication of a summary of the ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, oh, he passed the torch here.
He got tired.
I move for approval of ZC-4-15, 3502 North Fruitland Lane, Coeur d'Alene Enterprises.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move for approval of Council Bill Number 15-1025, Zoning Designation Ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Renata, read the title, please, if you would.
Council Bill 15-1025, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Act of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Known as Ordinance Number 1691, Ordinances of the City of Coeur d'Alene. By changing the following described property from R17, residential at 17 units per acre, and C17, commercial at 17 units per acre, said property being described as followed to wit, a portion of a parcel fronting Fruitland Lane, north of Nider Avenue, west of US Highway 95, measuring approximately 2.16 acres, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. I did want to add that we have a lot of these on the agenda tonight, I believe, because Warren Wilson was completing a lot of the work that he had going, and I just wanted to, on behalf of myself and the entire council, wish Warren the best of luck. We, in the past, have gotten really great employees from Post Falls, and they decided to take one back from us. And so, Warren is going to start, is it a couple of weeks, Mike?
Yeah, first part of November. He's going at the council, their council meeting tonight to hear if his contract gets approved. So, we're hoping they'll come to the...
But anyway, Warren, as all of us that have dealt with him, did just an outstanding job for us, and we're going to miss him. Mike's going to miss him a lot, and we wish him the best in Post Falls. So, we will now move on to Resolution Number 15-057, Approving Benefit Plan Amendments and Renewal Agreements with Group Health Options. Our staff report by a very patient, Melissa Tosi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I'm just basically requesting approval for the following benefit updates and changes that are effective in our new fiscal year, October 1st. The main change is the Group Health Options Medical Plan. Our medical review committee put in a lot of work to provide this option to our employees. That medical review committee has representation from all of our employee groups, police, fire, LCEA, unrepresented and exempt employees. And the employee groups agreed to move to a standalone Group Health Options Medical Plan, which resulted in significant savings in premium cost to the city. The three main changes were, the plan is a higher deductible plan, so there's $1,000 individual deductible, $2,000 for families, which is an increase. Office co-pays went up just a little bit, and 2% of that overall savings was a result of some contract language changes that recognized our council, our elected council members, as not being employees under our group health contract language. And therefore, once an elected official turns 65 and is eligible for Medicare, they are no longer eligible to stay on our group health options medical plans. They would go on to their Medicare supplements. So, those were the three main changes that resulted in that premium savings. Any questions with that? No? Okay. Our two dental plans, Blue Cross Dental, we had no premium changes or benefit changes. Willamette, we had a 3% premium increase with no benefit changes, no benefit changes with our life insurance or long-term disability. We, through our Magnus and McQ, our flexible spending account, added a $500 carryover plan to the flexible plan, which will hopefully encourage employees to use that tax savings benefit. Our HRA VIBA benefit, those contributions are based on the employee and the contract that they fall under. But the premium savings from switching to the higher deductible plan, the city is using that savings to contribute to the employees' VIBA plan to help offset that higher deductible. And the last contract is with Reliant Behavioral Health. It's a new employee assistance program, service for us, that will provide for one-on-one counseling sessions to employees or any of their eligible dependents, which that is taking the place of our previous EAP program with North Idaho Health Network, which is no longer providing those services.
Questions for Melissa? You got a question?
No.
Oh. She waited all this time, and nobody's going to ask her a question.
So, what do you think of the carousel?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of Resolution 15-057 and comment that these guys really worked hard on it. It's nice when the whole, all three groups can come together.
Okay, so we have a, you did a motion there, Woody?
Yes.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Troy is going to talk to us about the transfer of property at Walnut Avenue and 7th Street from North Idaho College.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I bring you forward a land proposition, bringing you up to speed on a piece of property formerly known as the Old Coeur d'Alene Armory. It sits at 717 East Walnut. On our map here, we've put the red mark on where that building is, and Harrison sits a couple blocks south of this. This would be 7th Street, and it dead ends right into this 2.3-acre parcel. This is the old yard that would be totally fenced. This is the building, and it does run all the way out to Spokane Street for ingress and egress. Back in 1988, North Idaho College became the stewards of this property through the State Board of Land Commissioners. In your packet, the trustees at North Idaho College have written a letter that we want to bring you up to speed on, that they would be requesting that the stewardship transfer over to the City of Coeur d'Alene. There are no strings attached other than this...
You don't have to pay for it again?
Thank you for that, yes. This is the building picture.
If you want to, Ron.
So, the only string would be that the conveyance is effective so long as the land and building are not used for a purpose in nimical to the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. And if such uses should occur, jurisdiction of the land and building will immediately revert to the State Board of Land Commissioners. That's not a word that I frequently use, so I needed to look that up. It basically means if it's unfriendly or harmful, it's an adjective that is in the language. NIC has used this building for softball practice. It is quite a large building. It is 8,513 square feet. It is on a little over 2.3 acres. This is the westerly side of the building. You'll see some homeowners have conveniently used a little bit of the space. The roof appears to be in good shape. It is metal. We didn't see any indications of water damage to the interior. This is the front of the building. As the windows became less than usable, they've been boarded up, and this would be the lot and to the east of the building. What would we do with it is always a great question. The City of Coeur d'Alene has been working with one of our nonprofits, that's a private organization known as the North Idaho Museum. They have storage in a blue building that's down on Bureau of Land Management land. They have been looking for space. We've taken their director, as well as a couple of council, a couple of their trustees up to look at the building, and they are interested in using it as a storage facility. The City of Coeur d'Alene would propose that the southern portion of the building, which is easily lockable and has two large doors that we could store some equipment in there. The city currently rents space in the wintertime to keep our sweepers in case we need to have them ready to go, so that we don't have to take all the water out of them and we're able to go in case an event occurs. So, we believe we can get some good use out of a portion of the building, a very small portion of the building, and North Idaho Museum would be a potential partner on this. If you haven't been up there, please drive in there. It kind of sits off 7th Street. It is south of the Venture High School, and so it's kind of quiet back in there. The fence is in pretty good shape. We'd clean up the yard. So, I'm bringing this forward to you to hopefully solve a couple of situations we have, which is the museum and getting some space for them. NIC definitely is happy to move on from this building, which concerned us a little bit, in the fact that they wanted to get rid of it. But they'd like to centralize some of their functions. They use it for storage of chemicals and some paints, and there are floor buffers that are broken down and things like that. Utilities on this have been a little higher than I would hope that we ever see. But again, they had young ladies in there practicing softball in the winter. It's not well insulated by any stretch of the imagination. So, they spent up to $1,200 on gas and electric. Their average has been over $470. We don't see that much being spent there. They don't use much water at all, typically less than 2,000 gallons in a month, so their water sewer bill's only about $30 a month. So, if all goes well, and you see this vision, we'd move forward with the Museum of North Idaho to bring back an agreement and keep pushing in the right direction to make all of these transactions happen. I would entertain any questions you might have.
Questions for Troy. You go first.
That's an interesting building. That's a really big yard, much larger than what that looks like. So, would that entire, inside the fence and/or that parking lot, be part of the museum use property, or is there another plan?
That's a great idea. They were not as interested in that fenced-in area as staff at the city thought they would be. So, we put on our thinking caps and thought maybe storage for some of the Iron Man equipment that the city currently has at our site up on Ramsey could be a good use. Not that it takes up a lot of square feet, but when Iron Man comes in, it takes up a lot of the inflow, ingress, egress to our property up on Ramsey. This would give a gate. This would give them plenty of space, and it's arguably closer to the site where they would put it.
Dan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Troy, the southern part of this lot looks like it's undeveloped. Has any potential been discussed for using that portion?
No. Nope.
So, we could make it into a park? We could sell it?
Sell it.
Sell it to the school district for $720,000?
That's an idea, but we might get caught up in that agreement that we'd be entering into as stewards. So, no, we're not the vested owner on this.
Ah, okay.
Any other questions for Troy? Any other questions for Troy?
I don't have a question, Troy. I just think, you know, it feels so good to be able to step up for the museum. To me, that's, the whole thing's worth that, especially for them to kind of feel, take some pressure off of them, you know? I think it's a, it's a great opportunity, and I'm excited for it. You know, it's rare things like this happen without somebody behind the scenes making some shaking, you know? Thank you.
Okay, so we're looking for some council action here.
I'd like to move to transfer the property Walnut Avenue and 7th Street from North Idaho College to us.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Troy.
Can I just clarify if the motion was to include, to direct staff to negotiate?
Oh, yes. I missed those words.
Okay, are we good now?
Second.
Okay, we're good now. Okay, looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to enter it into executive session as provided under Idaho Code 74-206, Section C, to acquire an interest in real property which is not owned by a public agency, and Section F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated. And there it is.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
We'll move into executive session. Parts of it.